Good evening.
Good evening. I will call the Missoula City Council meeting of September 25th to order. If you please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in liberty, with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
All right. We have.
We have an audio.
We have an audio issue. I don't know if it's unmuted over here.
Um.
Um.
Is that better?
Is that better? Test, test.
Okay, how's that? Is that better? How's that? Yes. Testing. Testing, how's that? Okay. Okay, great. So we will be in order. I'll call the meeting to order. And I'll note that all members are present tonight. We have minutes from. We have minutes. We do not have minutes tonight, I apologize. We next can take public comment on non-agenda items. So any comment on items not on our agenda, we ask that you keep your comments respectful and keep them to three minutes or less. And I have Mr. Larson online.
Yes, Matt Larson, Ward Three. We've seen in the last few weeks some articles come out in the Wall Street Journal regarding our homelessness problem in Missoula, Montana, which is quite ironic because often our city council here points to the homelessness issue being a larger national issue, which is often in an effort to deflate the issue at large and the lack of action that this body has taken towards it. I'm really hoping that interim mayor Hess can take some more action before he leaves office to kind of get us in compliance with Boise versus Martin and the rest of the Supreme Court rulings having to do with the urban camping and all of the homelessness issues that we've discussed at length with the city council. And so I'm wondering if we'll hear or see any more of that before the election. It's, it is just, it's, it's something that we should, we should definitely consider doing because it's going to benefit us gigantically and it is a great local responsibility. It's not just a national thing. And blaming national homelessness just diminishes the urgency of the situation in Missoula. We, we really need to address this and I think that's enough. Thank.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Seeing no additional public comment, we can move on to our schedule of committee meetings. Ms. Raybine.
Okay, Mayor Hess, just a moment. Let me share my screen. Okay, folks, here is the committee's schedule for this week, Wednesday, September 27th. City council committees' meetings are held in hybrid mode, so you can attend in person or via Microsoft Teams and all of our agendas are available if you click the Meetings tab on the city's main website. The Public Safety, Health and Operations Committee will meet on the 27th from 10:00 to 10:20. They're taking up two items. One is to amend the professional services agreement with Black Knight Security and also a contract for legal advertisement rates with Lee Enterprises. The Climate Conservation and Parks Committee will meet from 10:30 to 10:40, taking up the Quanis Park Underground Utility Easement. The Public Works and Mobility Committee will follow from 10:50 to 11:05, taking up Snow Farm First Amendment to Right-of-Way Agreement. And the Land Use and Planning Committee will round out the day from 11:15 to 12:30, taking up city subdivision amendments complying, that are necessary to comply with the 2023 state legislation and then ordinance amending the city's flood plain hazard management regulations.
Thank you, Ms. Raybine. Are there changes to that schedule? Seeing none, that will stand as presented. We can move on to our consent agenda, which consists primarily of items that were approved unanimously in city council committees and we save a little time on Mondays by taking those up as a package. Ms. Raybine will read the list aloud and then we'll invite citizen comment before we vote. Ms. Raybine.
Thanks, Mayor Hess. Just a second, I'll share my screen so folks can watch along with me as I read the consent agenda aloud. Tonight's consent agenda has seven items. The first is to approve accounts payable, which are also known as claims for checks that are dated tomorrow, September 26, 2023, totaling $1,035,029.37. Number two is to prove and authorize the mayor to sign the three-year, the new three-year collective bargaining, easy for me to say, collective bargaining agreement with the Montana Federation of Public Employees with the Wastewater Plant Operators Union. Number three is to prove and authorize the mayor to sign the new four-year collective bargaining agreement with the Building Inspectors Union. Number four is to set a public hearing on October 16 of 2023 and final consideration the following week, on October 23, 2023, for a resolution establishing the Public Works and Mobility's Department Fee Schedule and related fee increases for fiscal year 2024. Number five is to set a public hearing on October 16 and final consideration on October 23 for a resolution for a third quarter fiscal year 23 budget amendments to the city's annual appropriations. Number six is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign Prime Contract Change Order Number One to add Skyview Sport Court Reconstruction to an existing city contract with Knife River. That's contract number A9130 here at the city and the amount of that to use order is $145,000 for a new total contract value of $498,898. And finally, number seven is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Missoula County Public Schools for fiscal year 2024 After-School Program Services in the amount of $139,125.
Thank you, Ms. Raybine. Is there any public comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none in the room, online, Mr. Larson.
Yes, Matt Larson, Ward Three. I wanted to know if there could be some explanation as to the $20,000 claim for Dorsey Whitney regarding the pooled sidewalk bond issue, what that is going to be about. And I also wanted to know what, if we'd thought further about how we addressed our, or are addressing our arborists in the city as there's another $25,000 bill for Treasure State Arberry or Advanced Arborists via Treasure State Treats. And then there's also a $2,000 bill for MRA for John McDonald Consulting for a presentation. It seems like he does communications for people and he's a former reporter. I'm just wondering, like, what, what that is, too. Just, just, just trying to figure out what we're spending our money on. But ultimately, yeah, I'm really interested in the pooled sidewalk bond, Dorsey Whitney, $20,000 expenditure.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Any additional public comment? Seeing none, discussion from council. Seeing none, we can have a roll call vote. Ms. Raybine.
Okay, on the consent agenda, Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Sarah.
Yes.
Paulino.
Yes.
Contos.
Yes.
Palmer.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Nugent.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Cheryl.
Yes.
Buseka.
No.
And West.
Yes.
Would anyone like to change your vote? That passes 12 ayes, zero nays, and zero ahs.
And the consent agenda is approved. We have no comments tonight scheduled from city staff or various city entities, nor do we have any special presentations or proclamations. We do have one item for final consideration and that's the program year 2022 CDBG and home outcomes. We had a public hearing on this last week, so our standard process for, for the conclusion of a public hearing is any additional information from staff, if there are, if there is any? Is there some?
No additional.
Okay.
No additional information.
Thank you. So with that, any questions from council? Seeing none, is there any public comment? And seeing none of that, this came out of HRCP, Housing Redevelopment Community Programs, so I'd look to Ms. West for a motion, please.
All right. The recommended motion is to adopt the program year 2022 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, also known as the CAEPER, for housing and urban development-funded programs.
Thank you. That motion is in order. Any discussion? Seeing none, we can have a roll call vote. Ms. Raybine.
Okay, on the motion, Ms. Sarah.
Yes.
Paulino.
Yes.
Contos.
Yes.
Palmer.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Nugent.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Cheryl.
Yes.
Buseka.
No.
West.
Yes.
And Anderson.
Yes.
Would anyone like to change your vote? That passes unanimously with 12 ayes.
Thank you. We have one public hearing tonight and that is on the Edward Byrne Justice Assistance Grant. And Chief, are you providing our staff report tonight?
I've just available.
Okay, sounds great. So this has been available, or this was presented in council. Chief, could you give us just a brief recap for anyone that's watching on what the grant does? I know this is a really routine and beneficial grant source for us.
So the JAG grant has been accepted by the police department since 1992. So annually, we get the opportunity to invest in new programs or programs in which technology has advanced enough that it justifies an upgrade. This year, the, the programs we'd like to spend the money on include renewing what we call Secure Warrant, which is an electronic way for us to communicate with courts and prosecutors to more kind of efficiently pass through requests for arrest warrants and search warrants and property returns and so on. The second program is to renew our subscription to an online program called Virtual Academy. Virtual Academy is a way that we roll out training and information through our briefing reports. So for example, if we have a new policy, do you want to go out? We put it into Virtual Academy. They introduce it to the teams through the briefings and then that's a way for us to monitor the people to acknowledge they've received the training and so on. The third program on this, for this year's grant, is to invest in SOTOXA, which is a way for us to do roadside drug screening through evaluating saliva. If you can think about the portable breath test instruments that we use for estimating breath alcohol concentration for people driving under the influence of alcohol, this is kind of the equivalent for illicit drugs and it has state statute now that supports it in Montana. The next program is investing in a way for us to essentially kind of rebrand the department. So what I've been learning about branding is it is a way to bring kind of a unified message of what you stand for to your people and when they have a sense of purpose and a sense of mission, it can help in retention. Branding is also a good way for you to kind of establish credibility with your community. It's also a good way to help in retention, or I'm sorry, in recruitment in that it kind of shows what your agency is about and the hope is that it will attract the people who are in line with your values and it will maybe discourage people who are looking for another reason to be in this, in this profession. And the last one is a program called ESOP. ESOP is a way for us to modernize our background investigations, to make them more seamless and efficient and also for a way to make sure that we are, that all of the documents are kind of connected to each other. We don't have issues fall through the background investigation process that could lead to some type of an error in hiring.
Great. Thank you, Chief Collier. With that, I will open the public hearing on this grant. If anyone wants to comment specifically on the JAG 2023 grant, you are welcome to come on up. And seeing no one in the room or online, this public hearing will remain open until next week and when we take final action. Are there any questions from council members? All right. Seeing none, any, any discussion points for our final consideration? Seeing none, we will hold this open and we'll see it back next week. And thank you, Chief Collier, for the, for the staff report. We have one item of committee reports tonight and this is, this is the Grant Creek Road posted speed limit and this came out of Public Works and Mobility and I would go to Ms. Becera for a motion.
Thank you. I move that we adopt a resolution to establish a posted speed limit of 35, excuse me, miles per hour for Grant Creek Road from 300 feet north of Interstate 90 interchange extending 0.91 miles north based on the engineering study completed by Public Works and Mobility staff.
Thank you. That motion is in order. Do we have any staff with any additional information since our committee? Item on this? I see Ryan Guelph is on.
Yeah, I could briefly provide a little bit of background for this. So a couple of years ago, Public Works and Mobility staff were contacted by some concerned residents in the area about some safety concerns at some of the intersections north of I-90 on Grant Creek Road related to visibility. We went out and investigated those concerns and found that they did exist at two of those three intersections and we noted, which were Expo Parkway and Stonebridge Road, and we noted that Prospector Drive also had some site distance concerns. So we, we weighed some potential options to mitigate those safety risks and determined that adjusting the speed limit on Grant Creek Road was a feasible, cost-effective alternative to do that. Of course, that requires an engineering study per state statute, so we moved forward with an engineering study. And over that time documented that with those existing site distance concerns at the intersections, looking at the existing speed profile out there of current traffic, some of the roadway geometrics as through the windy road segment north of Stonebridge Drive and investigating crash data as well, we were able to conclude that 35 miles per hour is the most appropriate posted speed limit for Grant Creek Road through the segment that was described in the, in the referral. So, yeah, but you happy to answer any more questions if, if folks have any? Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Guelph. Any questions or comments? Ms. Becera.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank our Public Works and Mobility staff for taking on this concern that was expressed by residents in the area. This is a very narrow and curvy part of Grant Creek Road. Visibility is limited at times and there have been several accidents and wildlife incidents and near misses and I believe that with the increase in residents who are now part of the neighborhood, this is going to be a significant improvement towards safety. So I would, I will vote yes on it and I would encourage my colleagues to do so as well.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments? Seeing none, we can have a roll call vote.
On the motion to adopt the resolution changing the speed limit, Carlino.
Yes.
Contos.
No.
Palmer.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Nugent.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Cheryl.
Yes.
Buseka.
No.
West.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
And Becera.
Yes.
Would anyone like to change your vote? That's 10 ayes and 2 nays and it passes.
And the motion is approved. We have two items of new business, both of which are largely procedural in nature and we'll take them in the order listed. The first is a motion to reconsider the Lower Miller Creek Road right-of-way vacation in order to correct an error that we made a couple of weeks ago. And this also came out of Public Works and Mobility, so I'll go to Ms. Becera for a motion, please.
Thank you and I'm happy to provide a background after the motions are made. I move that the city council rescind the Lower Miller Creek Road right-of-way vacation to correct an error that we made at the September 11, 2023 council meeting. And I recommend that we adopt a resolution of the city council of the city of Missoula, Montana.
We have to take those one at a time.
Okay.
So the motion to reconsider is a procedural motion. It requires a two-thirds vote. It is, it is debatable, so we can talk about it and you can tell us the intent of it if you want. And then if the motion to reconsider is approved, it's before us as if, as if no action was taken, so then we can take the other motion. So any discussion on the motion to reconsider or would you like to provide any additional information?
Sure. So this is only a clerical error that we're trying to correct. We heard it, this item was heard in an August meeting where we set a public hearing for September 11 to adopt a resolution to close and vacate a portion of Lower Miller Creek Road public right-of-way. But the language at that September 11 meeting was incorrect. It stated that it was the intent to close and vacate the right-of-way. So technically, what we are trying to accomplish now is ensure that the right motion with the right language is what gets put in the books, essentially.
Great. Thank you for that background. Is there any, is there any public comment on this motion to reconsider? Seeing none, any council questions or comment? All right. Ms. Raybine, are we in the, oh, Ms. Anderson, question or comment?
So the question, I understand the reconsidering, the, so we're just voting on that and then we will move to the motion itself as though we have never voted on it and we can have discussion around that motion and make any amendments we see fit at that point?
Correct.
All right. Thank you so much.
Ms. Raybine, I was going to ask, since we're bringing back MCAT and we're bringing back some, some of the good old trappings of city council meetings, may I bring back a voice vote? You're muted.
So when we record votes in eSCAD, it actually records each individual's vote. We don't have a mechanism for a voice vote unless it's 100% unanimous. Otherwise, people who vote no will be recorded in the record.
All right. So with that, we can have a roll call vote then on the motion to reconsider.
Okay, on the motion to reconsider, this requires two-thirds of those present in voting in order to pass. Contos.
Yes.
Palmer.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Nugent.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Cheryl.
Yes.
Buseka.
No.
West.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Becera.
Yes.
And Carlino.
Yes.
Okay, the motion to reconsider is approved.
And Ms. Becera.
Okay, I recommend that we adopt a resolution of the city council of the city of Missoula, Montana, rescinding Resolution 8725 and adopting a resolution to close and vacate a portion of Lower Miller Creek Road public right-of-way in tract two of COS 6355, subject to six conditions of approval.
Thank you. That motion is in order as well. Is there any public comment on this corrected motion? Seeing none, any council questions or discussion? Seeing none, we can have a roll call vote on the new motion, Ms. Raybine.
Mayor Hess, I believe Councilperson Anderson has her hand raised.
I'm sorry, I missed you, Ms. Anderson. Ms. Anderson.
Yeah, thanks so much. Sorry, I like hover over the, hey, raise the hand and if I leave it there, it brings it down. So this is vacating a portion of Lower Miller Creek for the roundabout at the entrance to, no, it is not. Okay. I think it'd be helpful for on the record, because then there's lots of attention being paid to this area, what exactly this is vacating for. Thank you so much.
Ms. Anderson, do you, do you want staff to answer that or?
Staff or it does appear that Mr. Nugent is also equipped to answer the specifics. So whoever would like to jump in.
Yeah, Ms. Anderson, good question. This is for a different subdivision at the, the other side of Linda Vista Estates is the one we're talking about. So kind of over the hill as the subdivision's coming down the other side into Upper Miller Creek, the road is moving slightly and I see Mr. Monroe muted himself, too.
Great. Mr. Monroe or Mr. Silver, feel free to add as well.
Yeah, I, Troy Monroe, City Engineer for Development Review. On the screen, we see what Lower Miller, Linda Vista Estates looks like. Right now, we're in phase two, which is the, the greenish colored and as you can see here, Lower Miller Creek Road will dip down from where it currently exists, skirt around a future park and then connect back to Lower Miller Creek Road. And Lower Miller Creek Road is being moved so that a large multifamily area can be established for phase five of the Linda Vista Estates subdivision.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments? Seeing none, we can have a roll call vote now, please, Marty.
Okay, on the resolution to actually vacate this right-of-way, let's start with Farmer.
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Vasika?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Becerra?
Yes.
Carlino?
Yes.
And Kantoz?
Yes.
All right, that's unanimous. 12 ayes.
And the motion passes. Our final item of new business is regarding the public hearing scheduled for next week for the Fort Missoula Commons Appeal. And I'll go to Ms. Jones for a motion and report on this, please.
Sure. Let me, I'll state the motion first and then give some background on this, if that's all right. The motion is to cancel a public hearing scheduled for October 2nd, 2023, and the special meeting scheduled for October 19th, 2023, on the Fort Missoula Commons Historic Preservation Appeal of the May 3rd, 2023 Historic Preservation Commission Decision Regarding Fort Missoula Commons Post-Hospital Historic Preservation Permit Applications at 3255 Lieutenant Moss Road pursuant to the City Council's role found in Title 20, Section 20.85.085, Subsection P of the Missoula Municipal Code. The appeal will be considered at a future date and time to be determined. And would you like me to give some background on this?
That'd be great.
Okay, so it is the City Council's responsibility to hear this appeal. And originally, it was scheduled for September, and then it was kicked to October, and we're going to continue it again. In no way is this putting off any responsibility of council. There are some scheduling issues that I'll go through in a second. But first of all, I want everyone to know that I know a lot of public comment is coming in. All of that is being logged, and it will be provided in the long run when we ultimately hear this appeal. So we are continuing this into the new year, hoping to hear it in January or February of 2024. The reason why is the appellant, first of all, has requested that all documents go into a document depository. In other words, everything be in one place where everyone can find everything, and that's a reasonable request. That, however, will take some time and work on behalf of our city clerk. And instead of currently having three people in the city clerk's office, we only have two right now, as we have an opening. And our wonderful city clerk, Marty Raybine, is retiring in a couple of months, so there is a huge amount of work going on to transfer 30 years of knowledge. So there's just some capacity issues with our clerk's office in, in getting all this work done correctly. And we also, if we're going to continue this into the new year, it's an opportunity for us to rework the briefing schedule a little bit. We had some public comment that there was concern that there wasn't enough time to digest the briefs that would be submitted prior to us hearing this and after the hearing. So we can put a little bit more space in that schedule so that there's more time for everyone to digest that. So that's, and we worked very hard trying to put this into November, and ultimately, it just wasn't workable because of the, not everyone who needed to be there was going to be available. And I did not want to schedule this in December because frankly, it needs focus and attention on it, and December is not the best month for that. So those are the reasons why we are continuing this. I encourage public comment in any respect regarding this issue to continue to come to City Council and the Fort Missoula Commons email address that the clerk's office has tipped up. All of that will go into the document depository, but this will be heard in early 2024.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Jones, and I'll come to council comment in just a moment. With that, we'll go to public comment first, and this is, this is not on the project. This is on whether or not to cancel the hearing and reschedule it at a later date. And there's other channels for substantive comment on the project, as Ms. Jones mentioned. So any comment on the motion to modify or to cancel a public hearing? Seeing none in the room, and none online, we'll go to council discussion. Mr. Carlino?
Yeah, I'm happy to support the motion. I do have an amendment for the sake of, you know, trying to get as much public comment as we can and fitting with everybody's typical work schedules, I would, and since we have so many Wednesdays where we don't, we don't have council meetings, or this Wednesday, for example, where we only have two hours of council meetings, I move to amend this motion to the last sentence to say the appeal will be considered at a future date and time within typical city council meeting hours, as in Monday night or Wednesdays, to be determined.
Okay. Thank you. That motion is in order. Ms. Raybine, do you want to, do you have any, any comments on what that does from a procedural standpoint, or if you have any, if that, if that works on your end?
Well, everything in January works great on my end. So, no, not to be glib or funny, City Council does have two regular meetings scheduled in January, and just issue spotting with that agenda, you have a fifth Monday, and you might want to schedule a special meeting on that fifth Monday to finalize this, or you could carry it into February. So those are a couple of options. You're not locked into anything there. But just FYI, on your normal meeting calendar, if you held these meetings on Monday nights, you have two meetings in January with the fact that the first Monday is a holiday, the third Monday is a holiday, and the fifth Monday is Monday. And then, of course, your Wednesdays, I will tell you that sometimes council onboarding trickles over into that new calendar year. We'll try hard to get it wound up, but we do have a new city attorney, new city clerk's office, et cetera, coming on board with a new council, and we'll have new, new folks in the mayor's seat as well. So a big time of transition for the city. So we might want to look so hard at Wednesdays for that, for this particular subject. We might also think it would be useful to have a special briefing for new people on council, because I think the existing council is a little bit more, shall we say, you have more foundation about historic preservation, having knowledge of the board, the appointment process, and maybe some of the regulations than new coming people. So as part of the onboarding experience, we may want to do a trimmer on, on this particular thing, just so we have folks who are in the decision seat ready to make a decision in, in a quicker manner after they, right after they take off. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you. On the motion, Ms. Jones?
So I appreciate the thought regarding scheduling to put this on a Wednesday, but intentionally, I think we need to have a special meeting on a day that is not Wednesday set aside for this, because it could easily take a whole day. If it doesn't, great. But for those of us who are on council, when we heard the MERC eight years ago, it went for several months, because we were having it on Wednesdays, and we would do two or three hours on a Wednesday, and we could never complete it. I think it's much better to have a day dedicated to it when we can hopefully get through the entire thing and not have it go on week after week after week. So that was the thought process behind setting a special meeting.
Mr. Nugent?
Yep, I was just going to echo the same thing. We, we intentionally did this so that we weren't getting cut off. We were starting at 9:00 AM on a well-noticed date, which we will now notice again and moving it forward. So I won't be supporting the amendment, because I do think there is a reason that our council rules allow for special meetings, and this is one of them.
Ms. West?
Yeah, I was also going to say the same thing. I think if you start on a Monday night during our regularly scheduled time, we're likely to be here all night. And without, and I won't be here in January, but without knowing what regular business items will need to be taken care of, I think it's really challenging to limit, limit us to those two days. I mean, if there's a Wednesday open and we have all-day Wednesday, why not schedule it on a Wednesday? But the likelihood that that's going to happen is probably not realistic. And I think having a special meeting with dedicated time for this subject is important. And I, there will be tons of advance notice. I had blocked out, what was it, we were supposed to do this on November 18th, like I'd cleared that with my supervisor. My whole day is blocked out for that, which now I get back. So, but I think with advance notice, there's plenty of time for people to make alternative plans, whether it's with their jobs, or with childcare, or whatever usually occupies our time during that time.
Mr. Carlino?
Yeah, I guess I'll just respond to some of those. Yeah, I mean, there's about 10 Wednesdays a year where we have no committee meetings. This Wednesday, we only have two and a half hours of committee meetings. We could easily schedule it for 10 hours if we wanted to on, on any of these Wednesdays where we don't have many committee meetings, or, or don't have any committee meetings at all. I think it would help to get more public participation, to put it on the regular days. But I don't know, for some reason, we're doing it on a Thursday, but I guess it's out of my control. But I will, I guess we'll take a vote, do, whether to do it on normal council hours, or to pick a, a different day where, where we typically don't work and people don't expect us to be here.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson?
Thanks so much. I also agree with the folks who commented that, you know, I think if you were to ask the average person when we're supposed to work, no one would actually have a set time for that. We respond and do work all of the time in meetings and whatnot. So I don't necessarily think that we have set hours in this position, and we need to be flexible. And like Ms. West, I had also set aside the time and rearranged my schedule because I had enough notice. And I think that the folks who actually want to participate in this process will be looking for the notices and are organized on both sides, and will make sure that they are here. And I do think it's unfair to folks who have regular standing business in front of the city to try to be jammed in with something like this, be it on a Monday night or a Wednesday. This, you know, I've been on council where we've had these not-on-Wednesday meetings a small handful of times, and they've been well-attended by the people who care about the issue at hand. So I don't see it being something that is going to inhibit the public process, people being able to engage and having a full day set aside for something that, you know, this isn't necessarily in your normal run of, you know, our normal committee schedules, that this is a special hearing. And this is kind of, you know, comes up occasionally, and we need to make ourselves available for that. As I don't think anywhere it says we're contractually only doing certain hours on certain days. So I will not be in support and look forward to hearing this when the time is right. Thanks.
All right. I see no additional hands. Are there, is there public comment on whether or not to accept the amendment regarding scheduling on a Monday or a Wednesday? Seeing none, we can have a roll call vote on the motion to amend.
Okay, this is on the motion to amend, and I think we are at the start.
No.
Jones?
No.
Jordan?
Yes.
Nugent?
No.
Savage?
No.
Cheryl?
No.
Vasika?
No.
West?
No.
Anderson?
No.
Becerra?
No.
Carlino?
Yes.
And Kantoz?
No.
Oh, would any of you like to change your vote? That is two yeses and 10 nos, and the motion does not pass.
And the amendment fails, and we're back at the main motion on canceling and rescheduling the public hearing. Any, any public comment on this motion? Seeing none. Ms. Jones?
I just wanted to add that when we do figure out the schedule, we'll give as much notice as possible to everyone so that they can figure out their calendar accordingly.
Thank you. We can have a roll call vote on the motion to cancel the public hearing.
Okay. Jones?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Vasika?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Becerra?
Yes.
Carlino?
Yes.
Kantoz?
Yes.
And Farmer?
Yes.
Would any of you like to change your vote? It's unanimous. 12 ayes.
And the hearing is canceled. We have no additional items of new business. Communications from the mayor. I just want to thank MCAT for being back in person. I've been watching the Channel 190 feed a little bit out of the corner or on one screen here. It looks great. I'm excited. I think this is a really good public service to return to the cameras around the room and to eventually get everyone not having to use the Teams meeting if they're in the room. So this will, this I think will be a good procedural improvement for council, and I think it'll be a nice public service. We're working through kinks, and we'll, we'll see a few changes over the coming weeks. But I'm really excited for the end product. And I want to thank MCAT, and I want to thank IT and the clerk's office, and a variety of city staff who've been working on improving the meeting experience behind the scenes for the last several weeks. I think the behind-the-scenes part, other than the fact that it showcases that I don't have very much hair from that camera, it's, it's a very good thing. We can start, you're next, Mr. Nugent. We can start comments from council members.
You made me start looking around at all the cameras now. I have nothing except to say that it is homecoming this week, so there's lots of great things going on around town. And just, you know, be aware of all the extra people who will be around and coming back to celebrate going to school here in this great place, and proud to be an alum two times. So, yeah, should be a good week.
Ms. West?
So I just want to remind people that the 4-H enrollment year starts October 1st. So if you're interested in joining, now is the time to do it. And I'm also looking forward to the parade. I think my, both my kids are in different floats, and it's going to be a very busy Saturday.
Mr. Carlino?
I can pass.
Ms. Cheryl?
I'll pass.
Ms. Jones?
I was just trying to confirm. I believe that as part of homecoming, the Lady Grizz volleyball team is playing, aha, Montana State here at home Friday night. Anyone who likes volleyball, come check it out.
Mr. Kantoz?
I'll pass. Thank you.
Ms. Becerra?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring to everyone's awareness, in case you don't know, it's National Hispanic Heritage Month this month. And I just want to thank all the Hispanic people in this country who have made great contributions to culture, science, politics, et cetera. Thanks.
Ms. Savage?
Yeah, and just as a part of homecoming, the Montana Museum of Art and Culture is opening this weekend. It's a brand-new building. And finally, the curators of that museum are going to be bringing the collection and have brought now the collection out from under the Social Sciences Building, where it has been stored for many, many years. It's quite an interesting history. That collection has moved all over campus in various closets, basements, all kinds of places. So it's really great that it finally has a showcase and an actual building of its own. So.
And Ms. Farmer?
Thanks. I, I think it's safe to say that fire season is almost over, and we're transitioning now into prescribed fire season. And I just wanted to give a big, huge thank you to all of the firefighters and support staff and first responders that got us through a pretty hairy summer. It was set up to look pretty bad, but we, we made it out in a pretty okay way. So thanks to everyone for being away for their weekends and evenings to keep us all safe. safe.
Thank you. Online, Ms. Jordan?
I'll pass. Thanks.
Ms. Vasika?
I'll pass. Thank you.
And Ms. Anderson?
On the theme of homecoming, I want to welcome the biggest freshman class in a number of years. Enrollment is up at the University of Montana, so lots of more people will be able to proudly call themselves Grizz alumni, as I, myself, am one. So that's exciting news for our university, as well as our economy, and I'm excited to see the university, and I'm a big believer in a good liberal arts education, and I'm excited that so many people are choosing to attend the University of Montana. So thanks so much, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. We have no further business tonight, and we will be adjourned. Thank you all for your service.